Bowhead. In here my father will come to you once again, asking to watch over this council. Watch it over us and let us make the best decisions for this city. Thank God. Would God please watch over this nation? Please, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Trace the flag, please. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which this stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You get roll bound.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Ms. Felter.
Here.
Mr. Green.
President.
Mr. Fowler.
I'm here.
Mr. Hallard.
Here.
Mr. Lawberdane.
Here.
Ms. Terry.
Here.
Madam President, you have a floor.
We have approval of the minutes taken from the regular meeting held on October the 7th. I need a motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Council Fowler, second by Councilman Green. Public comments. Public comments is the section of written minutes. Would you like to make a comment on? If it's not in the written minutes, there will not be any discussion or comments on it. If you have any questions pertaining to any items on the agenda, please contact administration before or after the meeting. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Consent calendar.
F consent calendar. Number one, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for wiring cable. Number two, introduction of an ordinance to amend and reenact Article 3 of Chapter 2, Section 246 through 250 of the Alexandria Code of Ordinance relative to City Council District. Repealing Orders Number 37/2024 and reenacting City Council District for under and reapportioning in City Council District 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 as shown on the map title. City of Alexandria Council District prepared by the Office of City Engineer to provide for effectiveness and other matters with respect thereto. Number three, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the lowest proposal received from Hydro Max USA LLC for valid exercise and program services. Number four, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a corporate endeavor agreement with the Office of State Fire Marches, Fire and Emergency Training Academy to support fire and emergency training programs at Alexandria Fire Department facilities. Number five, introduction of an ordinance resoning property located at 3415 and 3419 Nelson Street, Alexandria, Louisiana, Parish of Rappese, from B3 Business District to C1 Limoney Commercial District to allow for the development of fast food franchise. Number six, introduction of an ordinance resoning property located at 700 Bellwood Boulevard, Alexandria, Louisiana, Parish of Rappese, from C2 General Commercial District to SF3 Single Family High Density to all for the development of 13 duplexes.
Can I get a motion, please?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilmember Lloyd. Any items to committee? There would be a public hearing on the redistrict on November the 4th and December the 2nd at 5:00 PM in the City Council chambers. Resolutions, please?
Resolution number seven, resolution authorizing advertisement for bid for electric utility right-of-way emergency services.
Motion, please?
Move.
Motion by Councilmember Lloyd, second by Councilman Lawberdane. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
Number eight, resolution authorizing advertisement for bid for petroleum products for various departments.
Motion, please?
Move.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, second by Councilman Lawberdane. Public comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
Number nine, resolution authorizing advertisement for bid for a minimum of one service utility body for the motor pool department.
Motion, please?
Move.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lloyd, second by Councilman Fowler. Public comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
Number 10, resolution confirming the appointment of Cynthia Baker to the Alexandria Civil Service Commission nominated by Southern University and A&amp;M College.
Motion, please? Motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilwoman Felter. Is Ms. Baker here to?
She hears. I don't see her.
Okay. Public comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
H Orders for final adoption subject to public hearing. Number 11, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for brass fittings and miscellaneous for a 12-month period.
Motion, please?
Move.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lloyd, second by Councilwoman Felter. Discussion, public comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
Number 12, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to renew the existing contract for janitorial services for the cleaning of the Alexandria Zoological Park.
Motion, please? Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Lawberdane, second by Councilman Johnson. Public comments.
Installers who frequently drill holes should try the popular steel four-blade sawtooth drill bit.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
Number 13, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the city attorney to satisfy the judgment run to June 12, 2025, and the consolidated matters at the 9th District Court entitled Maisha Piper versus Jamie Gant et al., Docket Number 271130, and Ebony v. Lee versus City of Alexandria, Clyde D. Mix, James A. Gant, and Go Auto Insurance Company, Docket 272626, and other matters related thereto.
Motion, please?
Move.
Motion by Councilmember Lloyd, second by Councilman Lawberdane. Public comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
Number 14, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for consolidated city compound metal roof and saw fit replacement.
Motion, please?
Move.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, second by Councilman Fowler. Public comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
Number 15, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for auxiliary power generator at Fire Station Number 5 located at 540 Coliseum Boulevard.
Motion, please?
Move.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lloyd, second by Councilwoman Felter. Public comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
Aye, community development, public hearing. Number 16, to hold a public hearing to consider condemnation of 25 structures.
Motion, please?
Move.
Motion by Councilmember Lloyd, second by Councilman Fowler. Public comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Public hearing is open.
Public hearings are open.
Chad Recommunicative Development, Sam Giordano, behalf of the owners. We are asking for a condemnation on 124 North 16th Street.
Anyone hear from that address? I need a motion. A second.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilman Lawberdane. Comments, discussion?
We can back up. The owners have been properly served.
Okay.
126 North 16th Street.
I want a vote?
Oh, they did.
We have to vote now.
He stopped.
No, well, he just wanted to go into the record that it was me serving.
Oh, I didn't hear anything.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
126 North 16th Street.
Anyone hear from that address? Motion, please? Motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilman Johnson. Public comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
99 Birdie Street, we are asking for condemnation. Parties have been properly served and notified.
Anyone hear from that address? A motion, please? Second, please?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilwoman Felter. Public comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
1212 Broadway Avenue, we are asking for condemnation. Parties have been properly served and notified.
Anyone hear from that address? I need a motion, please?
Move.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, second by Councilman Fowler. Public comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
36 Chester Street, we are asking for condemnation.
Anyone hear from that address? I need a motion, please?
Move.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Lawberdane, second by Councilwoman Felter. Public comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
74 Chester Street, we are asking for removal. The owner has demoted the structure.
Second.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilman Lloyd. Any public comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
A 73-year-old designer told me your age isn't the problem. Your pants are. That's why he
124 Chester Street, we are asking for condemnation.
Anyone hear from that address? I need a motion, please?
Move.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lloyd, second by Councilman Lawberdane. Public comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
1410 Finner Street, we are asking for condemnation. Owners have been properly served and notified.
Anyone hear from that address? No? Need a motion, please?
Move.
Motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilman Lloyd. Public comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
2415 Henson Street, we are asking for condemnation. Parties have been properly served and notified.
Anyone hear from that address? You'd like to speak. Motion first?
Move.
Second. Motion by Councilman Lloyd, I'm sorry, motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilman Lloyd. Lawberdane. Public comments, you need to discuss it. Public comments? You have to go right here.
Somebody arsoned that property.
We need to state your name, please.
Vanessa Jose Nelson Garrido. Somebody arsoned that property in April 28. We got the guy, he did it. The fire department said he arrested the guy, but I don't hear any more thing about the house. So my question is, I demolished the house, I don't have no problem to demolish the house. But what I gonna do with all the trash and stuff? I had to pay for that. I had to bring it into the dumpster, they gonna charge me for that. So what I asking is for help.
Help and what for?
For bring the, I got all the equipments to demolish the house. But it's the help for the price that he gonna charge me and the city trust. He's gonna charge me about $300, $400 for every, every time I go there.
I'm sorry.
So I passed for the property today, the property is full, the trash. Nobody leaving it. Everybody's dumping in that property right now.
And that property is yours, sir?
Yes.
We can't offer any kind of financial help, we could give you some advice. I mean, so.
Well, that's what I need, you know? Because I got the guy who burned it up. He's not gonna pay for it, I had to pay for it.
You got the guy that?
Yeah. We got the guy, he burned the house down. And I'm going to the police, for the police department today to ask for the report, they don't have no report for that.
Um, we can extend you 30 days to clean up the property. Would that help you in any form or?
Yeah, well, in 30 days, but I need the money to throw away everything up.
Yeah, we can't finance you to get rid of the trash that's on your property.
Yeah. The way it works, sir, is if we tear it down, we'll send you a bill. If you're unable to play, we'll put a lien on the property.
Okay, the property's only cost $6,000. You can put a lien for what, $30,000?
No, you're right, you're right. We'll put a lien off of 11 or 12, whatever.
Okay, well, you can have the property. Because I like, we just cleaning.
Well, that establishes that nobody wants the property.
Yeah. I don't want the property, I don't pay that bill.
Okay, so the city will clean it?
Yeah. It's fine.
And then we'll own it?
All right.
Okay. All righty. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
2416 Henson Street, we're asking for condemnation. Owners have been properly notified, served and notified. Yeah.
Anyone hear from that address? Motion, please?
Move. Second.
Motion by Councilman Lloyd, second by Councilman Lawberdane. Public comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
1527 Kelly Street, we are asking for condemnation. Parties have been properly served and notified.
Anyone hear from that address? Motion by Councilman Lloyd, second by Councilman Fowler. Public comments, discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carry.
67 Louisiana Avenue, we are asking for condemnation. Owners have been properly served and notified.
Anyone hear from that address? A motion, please? Motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilman Johnson. Public comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
89 Louisiana Avenue, we would like to ask for an amendment that was a duplex in your agenda fact sheet. It was sent in with 89 Louisiana Avenue is actually also 91 Louisiana Avenue with that building. It's all one structure.
I want to know, have you made this mistake with your holster? And by mistake, I mean, did you get a holster that's uncomfortable so you don't carry all the time?
Parties have been properly served and notified.
Second.
Second.
Move to amend by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilman Lawberdane. Public comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
Now we got to vote as it is.
As it is.
As amended.
As amended. Motion, please?
Move.
Motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilwoman Felter. Public comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry.
1906, 1908 Main Street, we are asking for condemnation.
I cannot confirm service, but I have a little bit of explanation.
Okay.
Talk to us.
Okay, so, my name is Becky LeBlanc. It is nice to meet you.
Okay.
And I was appointed under revised statute 334762 to represent the absent parties. It is not appropriate to appoint an attorney to represent parties who are located in the state. So here's what happened. This, it's owned by a company, I believe, called Tootsie LLC, and the registered agent of service of process was Camille Giordano. He has passed. There are four listed officers, five listed officers. One is deceased. I contacted the other four, I received notice from three. They thought that they sold the property to a Mr. Morrow, a freezer LLC, and I actually have the documentation where they thought they sold, but they didn't actually sell it. It was a buy-sell agreement. It looks like somebody printed it off the internet, thought they did a sale and didn't do a sale. So I do believe that Tootsie is the rightful owner. Three of the four living owners have consented to this. The other one I have been unable to get in touch with personally. But if he was served via registered mail, I think you're okay to proceed.
All right, so what course of action should we take, Mr. LeBlanc?
If he was served with my, I have spoken with three, and I can give you their names for your record that is. So Mary Cataldi has passed. Angela Sepulvede, she agrees. She thinks the property was sold. She agrees to the condemnation. Catherine Giordano as well, she agrees. So does Laura Medica. The only person I haven't spoken with was Sunny Cataldi. As long as there's proper service, I think you can proceed.
Has there been proper service? Yes, the property owners were served, and the one that they had thought they had sold the property to, Mr. Morrow, he was served as well.
Okay.
First condemned.
Good then.
Sorry for the
No, that's fine. You did right.
Thank you for your thoroughness.
We get a motion.
I move.
Second. Motion by Councilman Lawberdane, second by Councilman Johnson. Public comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's those old buildings, used to be food mart and stuff.
1208 Maryland, we are asking for condemnation. Owners have been properly served and notified.
Anyone from that address? I need a motion, please?
Move.
Motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilmember Lloyd. Public comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
2717 Overton Street, we are asking for condemnation. Parties have been properly served and notified.
Anyone from that address? Motion, please?
Move.
Second. Motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilman Johnson. Public comments, discussion, all
Madam Clerk.
Yes.
President.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano, who did you serve on item 16?
Mr. Morrow.
Who did we serve?
Alex Brown is deceased, Geraldine Brown is deceased, so who? Who did you serve?
I'll have to look it up if
he lives in Texas.
Sorry. Sorry. Reason I asked, I contacted the family about this property, and that's how I found out, Mr. Brown is deceased, this Brown is deceased. That's the mother, the grandson, grandson, and David Archino is the other grandson. And the other family members weren't aware. The house is in disrepair. It does need to come down, but I want to know who would be legally contacted. I'm assuming a letter was sent in return. And I don't know I'm sorry. We sent to David Archino. It was listed in care of for Alex Brown to David Archino. Okay, again, Alex is deceased, Geraldine is deceased. Right. Correct. David is the one you sent it to, did you get a response from him? No. We didn't either, and I think all the letters were returned. Sir? I think they were all returned, but I'm gonna find it. I think all three of them, we sent letters to, because that's kind of just how we do it. And, but we got no responses and weren't aware of anybody being deceased. Well, I mean, you sent the three of them, I know for a fact two of them are dead. That's what I meant, deceased, that's what I meant. Yes. It was returned. Yeah. Was that good service? So did Mr. Archino get served? That's my question. Because the family members are concerned about it being torn down without being contacted because they're currently paying taxes.
Councilman Green, who is next to Ken? That they can contact?
Was I'm sorry. They're related to Vincent Thomas, not Catherine Thomas.
If you have a contact, do you want to delay it?
This, this Wait, and then we, that's Really, can we? Yes. That, that's fine with me. So Alex Brown Alex Brown's wife is, anyway, I talked to him over the weekend, and if we can delay it Yes. We need to get straight because they're paying the tax on the property, but the property definitely needs to go down. But when you say you have contacted people, we need to make sure we're not heading to something we shouldn't be doing. Correct. We just say we notified them because
Because you're
I'll work out to the meeting, but Well, I can confirm to them Right, right. So Just for my knowledge, so most of those properties in our song headquarters, they're old, I'm pretty sure there's a lot of people that is deceased. So once you send out mail in return to you, because if the deceased might not get returned. Correct. There's still some action that has been taken, right? I mean, if you send it out and it comes back and you send it out to someone, I'm just trying to get this right, because I'm pretty sure all these people we go through, and those are properties, a lot of those people are deceased. So it's just, when you send it out and it come back returned Right. Does it serve as a proper notification? Yeah. What we do at our office, when it comes back, we try to find out if a succession was open. We found none that I'm aware of. They hadn't opened a, I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson. They hadn't opened a succession in the process of, was in the process of getting ready to do it. And the reason I'm giving the information, because Erica Brown, Madam President, is the person that I spoke with. And they were concerned about it. So I contacted them over the weekend, and they knew nothing about this, and I know Ms. Brown was my former church member, and Alex is her son. So that's why I was going to make sure we Understood.
But if someone is dead, and the address is, let's say, 2717 Overton Street, that person is dead, the mail is put in the mailbox, no one is getting the mail out the mailbox, so you can't get returned to sender. Am I correct?
Generally, it's certified, we send this out certified mail. So if it's no one there to sign the card, the postmaster, they will be returned to the office
Okay, so you send it certified, okay.
As non-deliverable.
Okay, all right then. Okay, well, I got that.
And if a succession's not open, we assume that they've just been accepted, or, you know, we don't know who the heirs would be at that point, and we would
Okay, so we have a motion to delay this?
We have a motion on the floor for
I make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Fowler, Mr. Johnson, would you all like to remove your motion?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna make a motion to delay this?
Okay.
And I need a motion?
Make a motion.
How many days? 30.
30. Okay, a motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilwoman Felter to delay 2717 Overton Street.
Okay.
So do we have any public comments about this discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
44 Prospect, we are asking for condemnation. Owners have been properly served and notified.
Do we have anyone here for this address? Motion, please? Motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilman Lloyd. Public comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
1424 Sherland. We're asking for condemnation.
Parties have been properly served and notified.
Anyone hear from that address? I need a motion, please? Motion by Councilman Valord. Second by, I'm sorry, motion by Councilman Lawberdine. Second by Councilman Valord. Public comments, discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
1518 Sherland. We are asking for condemnation.
Parties have been properly served and notified.
Anyone hear from that address? Motion, please? Motion by Councilman Fowler. Second by Councilman Johnson. Public comments, discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
1615 Sherland. We are asking for condemnation.
Owners have been properly served and notified.
Do we have anyone here from that address? Motion, please? Second?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fowler. Second by Councilman Johnson. Public comments, discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
God demands of our leaders that they may represent the citizens of Alexandria. In my Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
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 Welcome to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God spoke. Roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Felter?
Here.
Mr. Green?
The President.
Ms. Fowler?
I'm here.
Here.
Mr. Lawberdine?
Here.
Ms. Perry?
Here.
My name is President, here for...
The approval of the minutes taken from the regular meeting held on October 21st. I need a motion and a second.
Move.
Moved by Councilman Green. Second by Councilman Fowler. Public comments, what section of the written minutes would you like to make a comment on? If it's not in the written minutes, contact the administration before or after the meeting. Discussions? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Yes. Executive session to be held pursuant to... Two on the following. A, to consider an executive section to receive a report and recommendation from the city attorney regarding selling the disputed...
Roll call, please.
Ms. Valord?
Yes.
Mr. Lawberdine?
Yes.
Ms. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yeah.
Okay.